Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Testing, testing, testing.
Thank you, Mr. Troy.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mr. Cuadrano.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
With that, we will resume in public session. There is no action out of closed session. So we will move to number four. We have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Board. So tonight, we have some of our very youngest learners here. They're very excited to be here and they're going to lead us in the pledge tonight. Okay, are we ready? Everybody in? All right, we're going to put our hand, your sticker hand on your heart. Ready? Sticker hand on your heart, ready?
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in thy people. With liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Early Childhood Center. They would love to say their names if that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
If we practice. Okay. They're working on being big kids. All right, you ready?
I'm Madison. Mina. Andina. Madison. Emma. Lindeman. Oliver. Michael. Adrian.
They have one more surprise they'd like to do for you, if that's okay. All right. Ready, friends? One, two, three.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, K, L, M, N, O, P. Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z. Now I know my A, B, C. Next time won't you stay with me?
Thank you so much. Yeah, absolutely. Let's go take a picture.
I'm. 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 I'm.
All right, parents, you can come up. That's pretty good.
I think so. No, that's. Yeah.
All right, guys, you look up here. One, two, three, cheese. Parents feel free. Free going.
Kelly.
I have to go over there. I have to. 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 We move on to recognition. And we are all wondering, what's the last year's first. It's in your contract. Nope, we have. The first is, uh, high school. All right.
I will not be, uh, is it up now?
You won't be? There you go.
Uh, green light means go. Okay. Um, hello. Hi. I'm here to, uh, announce the two Huntley Red Raider wrestlers who placed at state this year. Um, we had Radic de Vorec. And Colin Bordeaux. We, um, in fear of them not practicing their ABCs, we will hold back on that one. Um, Colin and Radic had a great year. Um, our program had, uh, had a, a pretty good year. Uh, we won our, I think, our seventh conference title in nine years. Um, undefeated again, um, in conference. Uh, twenty-two and three overall. Ended up second in the regionals to the eventual state runner-ups, so, um, that's pretty good. Colin and Radic, uh, both had over forty victories this year. I believe Colin went forty-one and fourteen. Uh, that's a lot of wrestling. And Radic went forty-five and five. Radic took fourth place at state at one fifty-seven, and Colin took sixth place at state at one thirteen. Um, real quick on Colin, um, Colin started wrestling his freshman year, uh, him and his, his twin brother Cam. Um, and for him to be a state placer in three years is pretty impressive at Illinois 3A. Um, fun fact about Colin, um, he, on his phone, he probably changed it by now, but on his phone, um, I, I, kids give me their phones when they go out to the mat, so I looked at Colin's phone and he had a, a checklist of what he was going to accomplish this year. And we were out in Iowa and went to the first big tournament of the year. And there's seven things, six or seven things on there, uh, place at all these big tournaments, and place at state. And, um, I do believe he checked all the boxes this year, so, uh, that's pretty impressive. And, um, both these guys are leaders in, in the room. Um, Radic, uh, only, is only sophomore. Colin's a junior. Uh, they'll both be back. Radic is, uh, grew, um, you know, uh, matured. Uh, when we have good freshmen come in, the big thing for them is to mature. And he did that, and he was one of the leaders this year, um, on the team. Um, he's, uh, you know, we don't go by rankings too much, but he was always a top-three guy in the state. Um, you know, placed at every big tournament we went to. Uh, got down to the state tournament, had a, had a tough semifinal, um, you know, bounced back, got into the third-place match, had another tough match. Um, but from last year to this year, vast improvements in, you know, on the mat and in the, in the mat room. So, uh, the sky's the limit for both these guys. Um, you know, he's pretty exclusive wrestling. Colin does, uh, does lacrosse also for Huntley. So they're always moving, they're always practicing. They probably practice way much, way, way more much than, than I ever did, um, back in the day, where, you know, you wrestled a couple times every month, so, uh, they do it every day. So, uh, you know, great representatives of, of Huntley High School, these two. Uh, you'll, you'll hear about the Heinemann wrestlers, um, you know, Alex and Logan, uh, both placing. Um, I know Marlo had a placer. Um, there's a, another wrestler that placed in the club, the, the club side of it, uh, for District 158. Um, so our future's pretty bright. We have, we have a young team, um, I think three start, we only have three seniors wrestle at regionals for us this year. Uh, so we, we have a lot of kids coming back and should be fine next year, too, so, um, congrats to these two, and I'm sure I'll be back next year. We'll take pictures later. Or you wanna get all the wrestlers?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And congrats to Aubrey, the next one up.
All right. Come on out, all right?
Um, all right. I am the coach of the girls' wrestling team. I'm here to recognize Aubrey Rohrbacher. Um, I've gotten the privilege to coach Aubrey for the last two years. Aubrey is a tremendous athlete and incredibly hard worker. Part of the reason I've been able to recognize her here the past two years. Uh, Aubrey was one of two captains on my team this year. She had a record of forty-two and ten and placed sixth at state. Um, it was a privilege to get to watch her this season, and I look forward to watching her compete again next year.
Good.
All right, good evening. I first wanna thank you for the opportunity to present to Heinemann's finest. Tonight, I've been honored and I've recognized not one, but two outstanding wrestlers who have incredible passions and have made our school proud. Wrestling's a very tough sport physically, mentally, and emotionally. A man's resilience, toughness, and incredible worth ethic. Needs two young men embody all of that. Both of these athletes have left their mark on our program through dedication, perseverance, and leadership. First, we have Alex, to my left. Stands out about Alex most is his relentless drive. He's never made excuses, shied away from competition, hard work, and has always showed up ready to compete. Alex had quite an impressive season, finishing twenty-two and five, and battled his way to a fifth-place finish at the state tournament, a feat that only a select few ever achieve. Alongside him, we have Logan Woodbury. Logan's dedication, extremely long hours in, in the gym, and a refusal to never back down from a challenge aside from a part. He led by example, showing his teammates what it truly means to be committed to excellence. Logan finished his season with outstanding twenty-eight-and-one record. He was our conference champion, regional champion, sectional champion, and most importantly, he capped off historic season with a state championship at a hundred and twenty-six pounds. So on behalf of our coaching staff, their teammates, and entire school community, I just wanna congratulate them on two incredible seasons.
So can all the kids, can all the wrestlers come up? Yeah. 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 Congratulations. 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 So can all the kids, can all the wrestlers come up? Yeah. 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 Congratulations. 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 So you're gonna be moving up. Congratulations. 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 Good job, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations. Please, thank you. Congratulations. 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 There we go. There we go. That, yeah, yeah. Coming together. Uh, one, two, three. 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 Thank you so much. All right, we have another recognition here. Uh, Coach Ray.
Well, first off, good evening, and, uh, I'd like to thank everyone for inviting our girls' basketball program to be here tonight, uh, to be recognized on their amazing season. And I'd like to take a few moments to talk a little about some of those accomplishments. Uh, to begin, our team finished the season with a thirty, a record of thirty-five and one, which not only broke the school record for wins, but was also on the Henry County area record. Uh, during the regular season, they won both in-season tournaments, the Dundee Crown Thanksgiving tournaments and the Kamarmi Classic. They also won their fourth straight Fox Valley Conference Championship, uh, where over that four-year span, our team has a record of seventy and two in conference games. Uh, in the postseason, they won a regional championship, defeating Rockford Auburn. Uh, we moved on to the sectional, where we defeated Lake Zurich for a very hard-fought two-point win. Our team came up with an incredible stop in the last play of the game, uh, to win it. And two nights later, we defeated state-ranked Libertyville, uh, by a score of sixty-three to fifty to capture the sectional championship. And it was an incredibly special moment for our team and for our fans to win the sectional on our home floor. Prior to the season, no team in our program's history has won their Thanksgiving tournament, Christmas tournament, conference championship, regional title, and sectional title, all in the same season. And for as good as these kids are on the basketball floor, they're even better individuals off the floor, and they've represented our team, our school, and our community in such a positive manner. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize our players and coaches. Uh, if I call your name, if you could, please come up. Kenzie Oates. Evie Freund. Alissa Borzic. Avery Seast. Lana Havde. Cece Romano. Gwen Campbell. Luca Garland. Aubrina Adamick. Madison Diaz. Isabella Boski. Ava McFadden. Paula Strzlecki. Anna Campanelli. Coaches Clay Henrickson. Coach Sam Green. Uh, congratulations to our girls' basketball team on a historic season. Um, I'm, it's been a pleasure and honor to coach all of you, and, uh, I love you guys. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
And all of these have gained many great takeaways that are going to help us shape those pillars. A lot of really consistent themes we've seen come through with that, and careers, the trades is really a big one, the balance of technology, understanding that importance, but how do we balance that with the other skills that are important for our students to have, that innovation and personalization, or some of the things that we have seen come through. So we'll be working through a lot of that in April to develop those big-picture goals. The guiding team has met twice now. The last one, well, they did data walks for the first one, really gathering a background and understanding of where we are at in the district. And then this last meeting, just on Monday, looking at the summaries of the three portraits, the portrait of the learner-slash-graduate, that's a little bit more flushed out, and the other two, we've got a lot of feedback, we're working on definitions through there. So all of our groups will be taking that to bring forward, hopefully here mid-April, to share with the board on that, as well as looking at not the strategic planning measures, but a continuous improvement set of metrics that'll be on the dashboard for next year. So some of those will be academic. There were some really great ideas that circulated throughout the group about different types of engagement with parents, with students, looking at academic measures of success, looking at financial, HR components, and so having that. So we'd like to make sure that we're bringing those two things forward to you guys at the next meeting, but then the meat and potatoes of those goals will be just a little longer you have to hold out for those as the committee is working through that. We had our March PTAC meeting the week before, it was a really good conversation around AI, and so we could have used many more hours to discuss that, but looking at some recommendations of what the committee in districts has been working on about setting parameters or student guidance about what that might look like specifically in the secondary level, but we know that there'll be some things we'll need to add for the handbooks across all levels when it looks at AI, so developing a vision statement, some non-negotiables, and again, what do those parameters look like in the different classes. And then at our final meeting in May, we'll be talking about some recommendations again around AI, any attendance tweaks that the committee may recommend, or administration based on feedback we've gotten throughout the year, as well as if you can look again at that behavior matrix about things that might need to be tweaked, especially in the areas of some of those interventions that may need to be utilized. And then those recommendations will come forward in June, whether those would be in the shape of needing some updates either in policy or in handbooks. So we'll be bringing those forward in June. Raider Roundtable, just want to share, I hope I'm going to get it right, we are now on Spotify? Is that right? On Spotify, so we have a platform there with that. And we just did our student achievement episode, and up next, Mr. Altmeier will be our guest, and we'll be talking about sustainability, operational efficiency, financial-type things. We will unveil today, but we will have more information, our Raiders Read Together this summer, going to do a lighthearted book this summer, and we're happy to announce it is going to be The World According to Humphrey. Humphrey is an adorable little hamster, not gerbil, hamster, and it takes us on some journeys, and as we look at how Humphrey has had a positive impact on everyone that Humphrey comes in contact with, so we'll have some little lessons around that, and we never know where Humphrey may pop up this summer. So stay tuned for more information about that. Our chronic absenteeism, just a quick update on our district enrollment. As of the end of February, look at that enrollment at the end of each month, we're up 95 students from our sixth-day enrollment, and our largest increase, as is typical, is at our ECC. We did have 54, I believe, early grads, and so that does impact the numbers as well. But we are continuing to monitor all of those things. We still do see a decline in enrollment, but are anxious to get some of our information back about our demographics. For attendance, slight dip, but remember, we just came out of cold and flu and everything else season, and so we're sitting at our average daily attendance for the district is at 93.42% in attendance on a daily basis, and that was as of, I pulled it as of today. So we have that. Our chronically absenteeism, right, we saw a slight uptick in that at 16.22. Remembering though that in our report card, like in ECC, are not configured in that number, they are in this number because we feel that it's important to set that foundation and to build those habits all the way through our schooling, so that it carries with them as life lessons. Our top reason for absences has been illness, like quite a bit. It's instances to date are just over 38,000, but you have to remember, those are not, I mean, we had lots this year, there was many different strands of the flu and all of that. So our second is unverified, and I'd have to tease through that about, or not unverified, unexcused, some of those are vacations, things like that, but our committees are looking at that, and then the third is unverified. So we have a number of parents just not calling in, and even with repeat phone calls after 48 hours, that's slight over to unexcused. So looking at that, but we are still seeing a positive trend in the update if we look at year over year. We were right around mid-40s as the no-student-absent issues last year at this time, and we are, I believe, about 58, 59%. So we are definitely seeing an increase there, and then there is the last part of that system. Regular updates and memos and ILOS and all of that, I do want to give a shout out, I know we're on social media, and our schools are pushing it out, but our five essentials, which is extremely important, one, for information for school reports, but two, more importantly, it does provide us feedback and information on things that we can look at internally at the district and at the building, and I believe that closes Dr. McCurnell on May, or March 28th. So we want to do a big final push here before people head out for spring break to see if we can, we've done really well on the staff, and student numbers are up from last year for parents, but still pretty small, we want to push that out. So we'll give a shout out to that, and I know we'll get that out on social media and a couple other avenues tomorrow, try to get more information there. Any questions on that, or anything else?
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Number nine, Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Innovation.
I have one update this evening regarding our kindergarten one-to-one device model transition for next school year. We have been doing a deeper dive into the electronic platforms that we utilize, we've been looking at usage, we've been looking at how do they align our curriculum at every grade level, and also just the developmental appropriateness of technology used within the classroom. And through some reflection and research, we have decided to transition away from a one-to-one device model at the kindergarten level for next year to a small, six-age class set of devices that teachers will have in their room for students to share and utilize whenever there might be an opportunity that's developmentally appropriate. The rationale for that is obviously the developmental appropriateness of that practice, but we know that kids, especially our younger age learners, who have some office screens and to be doing more of a hands-on components of the learning. We've made an intentional shift with our dollars to help support more hands-on materials at our elementary level, and so we feel confident that we are able to have the right materials in hand for kids to be doing that more hands-on, problem-solving, talking face-to-face type of learning, and our teachers have done a great job of shifting their instruction that way. We also know that we believe in a balanced technology integration, that we want to make sure that as kids get older, that we're using it appropriately, so we're continuing to look at other grade levels, but we wanted to start at our youngest learners, where it's so important with the research to make sure that we are not over utilizing screen time in our classrooms. Of course, there is, there's some long-term cost savings associated with that, that was not the driving rationale for why, but it is a positive benefit, but something that we are excited about. There are some considerations that we dove into, and we talked with our teachers about this as well, and our building administrators, who were supportive of this idea, but if there was firsthand E-Learning Day, we have a model over at our ECC level where we do send home hard copy of work that students can do, and then parents can have their students optionally hop on a Zoom or a Google Meet, sorry, Google Meet, where they can hop on for a story or talk with their teacher, or we're going to really make it more of that on their own practice at home, which is developmentally appropriate side, we're not concerned about missing that day, we'll make it up when they get back. We often know that there are some students, we've been working with the field and special services, that they might need to have access to devices because of their IET or their specialized needs, of course, we continue to provide that access based on what students' and needs are. We are going to work through some parent communication and expectations around this just so that parents understand that why. Teachers support, of course, there are some assessments that students take online, because we have a smaller class set, teachers will be able to still have students take those if we need to do that, and even Mr. Freeman's in our technology department found these little small cases that we're going to be able to store them in, and that you could literally just go share even with other classes. So thank you to Mr. Freeman for helping support that for sure. And then just through the logistics, that's what most of the questions the teachers had around that was, you know, how will I store them, where would they go, and so we felt good about being able to provide those answers. So our next step is to begin that communication and any of that training and guidance to our staff, but we're excited to bring this recommendation, and we feel like it is the right thing to be doing for our students, and will be a positive impact on our early learners. Any questions or comments?
I mean, I think that's great, outstanding. I think the only question is, we're obviously not doing this purely, this is not a budget reason, but let's make sure some of those dollars get back in there for the year, I think you said that, but I just want to make it clear that's clearly the intent here, but this is, the kids are on screen way too much, we all know this. Let's see how it works. Any other comments?
So thank you, Dr. McCurnell. Moving on to number 10, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, Dr. Zier.
Good evening. Just a few updates, Department of Human Resources, we are, we have to switch into 25-26 mode for recruiting and staffing, making some of our first certified offers this past week, and have some folks moving forward in the hiring process and difficult positions that we haven't actually had to build over the past couple of years. So we have landed a few folks and have a few offers out there before we get into spring break, which is very good, so we're excited about that as we prepare for the next school year. Also, in the HR department, just have a few salary studies and reports that we're getting done for the state, have some deadlines coming up here in April, mid-April, that we need to have completed, and then I have some updates to dashboard information there on staffing counts and health insurance tab on it at this point in terms of numbers. I'll take any questions if you have.
I appreciate it, thank you. Keep hiring. All right, moving on to number 11, Director of Communications and Public Engagement, Ms. Far.
Yes, I submitted a report for this month, two for you, just wondering if anybody had any questions on those.
They're pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Ms. Far. Moving on to number 12, President's Report. I guess the first thing, I didn't jump in when Ms. Lombard was speaking, but I wanted to kind of celebrate the AI discussion at the PTAC. I thought Dr. McCurnell, Mr. Turek, and Ms. Spears did a wonderful job. I think there was a lot of really good feedback there, and I mean, people need to understand, yes, there's technology here and we should use it, but there was also a lot of feedback of, you know what, teach my kid, don't give them this tool yet, let them, let's focus on the teaching and look for ways that we don't need to use it. So I think the parents were all engaged in that discussion that were there, and I thought you guys did a really good job for saying that, so I appreciate that. Second thing, just a shout out, tomorrow is World Down Syndrome Awareness Day, so wear your mixed-up socks, enjoy that right before you go on to spring break. So with that, my comments, any board discussion? Any board discussion? We'll move on to the minutes here, any comments on the March 13 minutes? That look good? All right, just there. So we'll move on to 13, we have the consent agenda here, any comments before we jump into the consent agenda? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written in the agenda here. Can I have a second, please? All right, I'll give that to Ms. Murray. With that, so can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, with that, consent agenda approved, seven-zero. Move all the way down to 14 action items here, so 14-1 supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable, Mr. Altmeier, anything to add? Nothing to add. All right, so any commentary from the board? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve 14-1 supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Can I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Mr. Craddy. I have a roll call vote.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, with that, 14-1 passes seven-zero. We will move on to 14-2, the HR personnel report. Dr. Zier, anything to add?
No.
All right, with that, any commentary from the board? So I'll make a motion to approve 14-2, the HR personnel report. Can I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
With that, 14-3 passes seven-zero. All right, we'll move on to 14-3, Resolution of Non-Employment, Resolution Number 2025-03-01. Dr. Zier, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, any commentary from the board? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve 14-3 Resolution of Non-Employment, Resolution Number 2025-03-01. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, with that, 14-3 passes seven-zero. We will move on to 14-2, the HR personnel report. Dr. Zier, anything to add?
No.
All right, with that, any commentary from the board? So I'll make a motion to approve 14-2, the HR personnel report. Can I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, with that, 14-2 passes seven-zero. All right, we'll move on to 14-3, Resolution of Non-Employment, Resolution Number 2025-03-01. Dr. Zier, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, any commentary from the board? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve 14-3 Resolution of Non-Employment, Resolution Number 2025-03-01. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
With that, 14-3 passes seven-zero, and that is the end of the action items for tonight. We'll move on to 15, our second public comment.
Any public comment?
All right, anybody want to come on?
You're our only public.
No, nothing? All right, I'm good there, then. We'll move on to 16, which is adjournment, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:50 PM. Second. Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion is, we can adjourn.
Any comments on the March 13 minutes? All good? All right. Good there. So we'll move on to 13. We have the consent agenda here. Any comments before we jump into the consent agenda? All right. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as written in the agenda here. Can I have a second please? All right. I'll give that to Ms. Murray. With that, so can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right. With that, consent agenda approved, seven zero. Move all the way down to 14 action items here. So 14-1 supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Mr. Almer, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. So any commentary from the board? All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve 14-1 supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. I have a roll call vote.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right. With that, 14-1 passes seven zero. We will move on to 14-2, the HR personnel report. Dr. Zier, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. With that, any commentary from the board? So I'll make a motion to approve 14-2, the HR personnel report. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right. With that, 14-2 passes seven zero. All right. We'll move on to 14-3, Resolution of Non-Reemployment, Resolution Number 2025-03-01. Dr. Zier, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. Any commentary from the board? All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve 14-3, Resolution of Non-Employment, Resolution Number 2025-03-01. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
With that, 14-3 passes seven zero. And that is the end of the action items for tonight. We'll move on to 15, our second public comment.
Any public comment?
All right. Anybody want to come on?
You're our only public.
No, nothing? All right. I'm good there then. We'll move on to 16, which is adjournment. So I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:50 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion is adjourned.